Calls are ordered tonight. Plan Commission Study Session, if I can get a roll call, please.
Mr. Burleson?
Here.
Ms. Cardona?
Here.
Mr. Gill is absent. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Ms. Wooland is absent. Mr. Kennedy?
Present.
Mr. Everly?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Decker, Attorney Decker?
Here.
And Mr. Panzic?
Here.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, as well as those online. Next on the agenda is for study session, Gates of St. John, Unit 21B, St. John East, 21B. Petitioner will be seeking to plat 25 single-family lots. It's part of the original 108 acres. With that, I'll turn over to Mr. Kiper. Tim, how are you this evening?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim Kiper here on behalf of LBL Development LLC. As you stated, this is just a string of lots on the south side of the 108 acres that was previously in town. So that'll finish up that property that was in town and that project in that area. So we will, should be noticed up for the public hearing in early September along with the signposting and everything else should be in compliance for that to go ahead.
Questions from the board? Against Ken and Rick, are you going to use this one in your plat? Does it meet all the requirements from the PUD?
It's consistent with the rest of the lot layout in the original 108 acres. That's correct.
Ken, any comments at this time?
No, I think I agree with Rick. This is pretty much in compliance with what he has laid out in the previous in-town subdivision layout.
Okay. Tim, this is just south of 105th, right? These are the lots just south of like lots, 2338 to 2319 for units 21B or 21. This is just south of that.
Correct.
Okay. And just so that I'm getting my math, if I go to 21, Unit 21, on the west side, you got Unit 2339, 2340, and then when you jump to this one, which would be 21B, the next one south is 2142. Is there a lot in between?
No, there's 21 or 2340 and then...
The next one jumps to 2142?
Yeah, and that's just because of the numbering that they did on that. It just, it circles around instead of...
I just want to make sure I got my bearings straight. I'm sorry, Tim, I should have clarified that.
But the next, the next item, if you look at that, these lots are on the south side of the next item.
They're just south of the next item, yes?
Correct.
Okay, yes, okay.
Just for your bearings.
I just want to get my bearings. Thanks, Tim. Anyone online or any board member here has any questions for Tim, Rick, or Ken regarding the, again, this will be a public hearing for approval of this plat at the September 2nd meeting. All right. I will move on to the next agenda unless I, item, unless I hear anything else. Next on the agenda is Gates of St. John will be seeking secondary plat approval for units 21, 23, and 26. So these were already received primary plat approval, so...
Correct.
Tim, any comments from you at this time?
Again, if you've driven down Klein, you'll see a lot of earth moving activity over there, a lot of pipes and different things going in. So this is just the first of what will be several final plats that'll be coming in. And again, this is 21, 23, and 26. This will put in the main drive of 105th Avenue, which is, if you went across Klein, would then go into Orchard Gate. So those improvements will be going in in that main line and then all the utilities along with it. So, yeah, it's compliant with the primary plat that was approved for this, and we'd be seeking final plat approval on this at the September 2nd meeting.
Ken will be receiving a letter from you prior to that meeting after your review?
Yeah, I noticed a couple of differences in the primary plat and the secondary plat. If you look between lots 2108 and 2109 on the primary plat, there is a 28.49-foot lot that was intended to be the driveway to the new well that is just to the east of this project, that is no longer shown there and is not shown with an easement there. There's also a difference up in the northwest corner for Lot 2141 and Lot 2140. The primary plat pretty much showed it going from the center of that eyebrow cul-de-sac to the northwest corner of the property. That's a little different now. And I know this is just off to the east of Lot 2102. There was supposed to be a 20-foot emergency overflow spillway lot from the detention basin. They show dashed lines for the lot next to it, but they don't include that 20-foot for the emergency overflow spillway from the detention basin. And this is just a cursory review. I didn't have a chance to look at it very closely. I just got it. Rick and I talked about it a little bit yesterday. He thought there was another easement not showing, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Rick about where that was.
Okay. Well, I know you'll work with Mr. Kiper, the developer, to resolve these.
And we'd hope to have all those discrepancies worked out by the September 2nd meeting.
Great.
Right. There were just, there were, I would characterize them as minor differences between the secondary plat and primary plat, and I would characterize this as being in substantial compliance with the primary plat. But I had intended to make those same comments that Ken did as well. There's a, there's another easement between lots 2643 and 2644 that's not on the secondary plat, that was on the primary plat. A couple of the easement sizes have changed, Tim, from 12-foot to 10-foot. I did specifically speak to John Lawton about the 20-foot overflow lot, for lack of a better word, between 2102 and the lot, first lot in Pod 22 to the east of that. And John had decided to make that part of each of those lots. I believe that's why you see a drainage and utility easement noted there on the east side of Lot 2102. That's a 10-footer. I expect to see a matching 10-foot drainage and utility easement on the first lot in Pod 22, and I believe that replaces the 20-foot, again, I'll call it a lot that was there in the primary plat, and that was because Mr. Lawton felt that that would become a no-man's land. It was, it was owned by neither property owner, but would likely be maintained by either property owner anyway. So he was adding that 10, half of it, to 2102 and the other half to the lot that will come in with Pod 22, so...
Rick, refresh my memory. What's the side yard setbacks for these?
Six feet per the zoning commitment. Minimum six foot for interior side yards.
So how do you have a, how do you have a 10-foot easement on a property with a six-foot side yard?
They'll have to make, they'll, but remember, that lot was 60 feet wide, John. Now it's 70.
If you look at it, it's actually extended 10-foot to the side. I mean, I know it's hard to see, it's small, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
It's extended, and then the lot next to it will have the same thing, so it's the 20 in total for that overflow.
So, so they'll have to observe a 10-foot side yard setback because of the easement being there. But again, the lot is 10 feet wider now than it was when it was going to have a six-foot side yard setback with no easement there.
Right. The, the 10-foot utility easement would supersede the six-foot side yard setback. And as long as the, the next lot to the east also has a 10-foot easement for utilities, I don't have a problem with it. But right now, it, you know, it only has half that easement, and the detention basin isn't part of this particular unit.
And we'll address the driveway to the well as well, because we need access to that, I would imagine.
In the primary plat, there were two other access points to the well site. One is, one is the property where you see my cursor now.
Okay.
See this here? This was, this was a good-sized access point to the well site, and the other was to the, to the south of that. In fact, I can show you roughly, yeah. The other was, was bordering the north line of these lots, 2300 through those to the east. So there were two other access points to the well site on the primary plat. So the fact that we're missing the one from this secondary plat is, is not problematic because we already, we have two other access points to the property.
Well, it is problematic because the one that's missing from this particular plat is the driveway. We were actually going to build a driveway from private drive into the site where the well was going to be. Yeah, I know there's some problems between the developer and the town about all this, but that's what was originally approved, and that's what I have to review against.
Right, right. And so the driveway's going to have to come off of one of those other two access points now.
But it can't get to the well site from either one of those access points. It has to come off a private drive, or else it has to, to go down into where the detention basin is. So it has to come off a private drive into the, what used to be an outlot, but since has been changed into easements for other lots in the next phase to the east.
We'll look at that.
All right. Ken, you'll, you'll follow up with Mr. Lawton or the developer. I'm confident, so...
Yeah, I will definitely try, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you understand his concern, Tim.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions from the board at this time regarding secondary plat? All right.
Thank you. See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
We'll see you on September 2nd. Item C, Dale Lenting is seeking a one-lot subdivision approval at 10810 Snyder Place. He's combining two lots into one.
Members of the commission, Mr. Lenting is here this evening. I wanted to point out to you that he appeared before the Board of Zoning Appeals last month to seek a lot size variance. He owns two lots, as Mr. Kennedy described, and he could actually build on each of them individually, independently now with, with nothing more than a building permit because they meet the grandfathered minimum size for buildable lots. But he wanted to combine the two into one lot and build one, one larger, nicer home on a, on a larger lot. But in combining them, they only come out to about 13,500 some odd square feet, so they're short of the R2 minimum 15,000 square feet they're required to have. So oddly enough, he needs to seek a, a lot size variance from the BZA before he can approach you for a one, the plating of a one-lot subdivision. The BZA acted favorably on his request, granted the, the lot size variance. So now he's coming before you to actually plat the two lots into a one-lot subdivision.
Good evening, sir. How are you this time?
Good.
If you just want to give a brief description to the board on what your proposal, and I know Rick did a lot of that already, but if you want to run through that again?
So it's an older subdivision, and previously, there was a house built right in the center of these two lots. At our last meeting, several of the neighbors, and I actually live right around the corner also, so I am concerned about, I want, I want to keep it nice, came actually to the meeting and are in favor of what I'm doing because they'd rather see one house, how it used to be, compared to two houses. So that's what I'm hoping gets approved this evening.
This is the property here where the cursor is. On, is it Schneider Place or, or Drive there, Dale?
Uh, Place, I think.
Place, okay.
Rick, on this drawing in front of us, or, what is it? It says Lot 1, is it?
It's, it's, yeah, that's what it'll become is Lot 1, but it's currently lots...
12 and 13?
12 and 13, right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll open up the County GIS. That shows the lots better.
Mr. Lenting, just a question, any, is there additional property to the north, to the south, to the east that you, that you own, that you could make this larger, or you're maxed out at this?
Yeah, that's, that's it, yep.
Very good.
Okay, so it's these two lots here, 12 and 13. And again, he could build on each of them independently, but he's chosen to combine them. You'll notice, as I zoom back out, that a couple of the homes, I think, already straddle a lot line, which is not something we allow anymore. This one to the north of his does that. This one does that. Looks like this property may as well, but at least two of the homes already straddled the lot line, but our ordinance no longer allows this. So he has to combine it into a one-lot subdivision in order to build on it.
Very good.
Is this a public hearing, or is this just a motion? This will be a public hearing for a one-lot subdivision.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the board?
No.
No? All right, we'll see you September 2nd.
Thank you.
Awesome. Next on the agenda, the Preserve West. It's a discussion to rezone roughly 135 acres of land north of 101st Avenue. There's a public hearing scheduled for September 2nd.
Good evening. Jack Slager with Schilling Development. I actually have the next five items on the agenda, but I want to kind of talk about the next three together. So we're, we'll be seeking rezoning on three large parcels in town, and all three of them are zoned, currently zoned open space, which we talked, I was here at the last study session. We talked a little bit about that, just that in the past, the open space designation has kind of been a placeholder for large parcels of land, typically farms that were annexed into the town, within a, the intention of trying to hold the, the property taxes down with the open space designation. So the Preserve West, I don't know if you were going to pull that one up, Rick?
It's struggling, Jack, but it's coming.
Is formerly known as the Buckmire Property, west of the Preserve, surrounded completely by Bull Run Creek. And we would like to continue with the Preserve concept, the same type and size of lots, 80, 80-foot, 90-foot, and 100-foot lots by 150-foot deep. There'll be a lot of conservation area, a lot of open space. There's a pipeline that bisects the property on an angle. There's some floodplain along the creek. But we will have, basically, we'll be seeking an RC1 PUD zoning, which is the same as what we have in the Preserve currently. And that allows, that's the residential conservation, so that allows us to have a slightly smaller lot, but essentially end up with the same density as an R1, and we follow the remaining R1 guidelines as far as size of homes and things like that. So basically, yeah, just looking to continue what we're doing in the Preserve, strong covenants, high architectural requirements, high landscape requirements, and we're going to dig an eight-acre lake in the middle of the property and have some lots that actually back up to water. We'll continue Water Leaf Drive across the creek. We'll have a bridge there, and so that will connect up to the existing Preserve subdivision, and ultimately, we'll get a new entrance out to 101st Avenue. So that's the concept. Again, at this point, we're just seeking the rezoning. Once we get the rezoning, then we'll move forward with all the engineering plating, and we'll, we'll have to come back again and come before you for primary plat and things like that. So we have sent out our notices. We've sent out the adjoining notices. We've done the ads in the paper, went in Saturday, got the sign on the property. This one's going to be, there's, there was, I don't remember the number of notices, there might have been 50 or 60. We catch all of the, all of the adjoining properties in Bramblewood on Julia Drive because of the 300-foot radius requirement, so there's going to be a lot of questions, I imagine, from, from those folks. But other than that, it's, it's pretty straightforward. Any questions on Preserve West?
Any questions from the board?
John, this is Yolanda. Just, the picture on my end isn't that clear, but if the purple lines, is that the pipeline that he's talking about? The purple lines on the picture that we're looking?
Yes, yes. Yeah, there, yes. There's actually three pipelines that come across the creek from the north, and then they, they split at the north end of the property. One of them continues on an angle, bisecting southwest through the property. That's it right there. And then the other two go side by side directly south and then follow along the creek, and those actually head into Saddle Creek, through Saddle Creek, and ultimately through Greystone. But we're going to, we're going to keep plenty of distance off the pipelines. We're not looking to get too close to any of those, and we'll, we'll use those as additional green space out there.
Jack, besides the going to an RC1 PUD zoning, I know lot sizes might be a little bit smaller. Is there any other variance other than the, the size of the lots?
No, not really. We can, we can hit all the other R1 requirements, which is really size of home and things like that. The, the setback, we go with the variable setback, which is the same thing we did even in the Continental, which is a variable from 25 to 40. We pretty much dictate for all of our builders that we like to see the home set at 30-foot setback. The side yard setbacks are minimum eight on an 80-foot lot, nine on a 90-foot lot, 10 on a 100-foot lot. So we keep, we keep a lot of the same requirements as the R1, other than having some 80s and 90s instead of hundreds.
Okay.
Hey, Jack, this is Ken Kraus.
Yes.
Where were your water source and, and where will you take your sanitary sewer? Will it go to the new lift station in the Preserves across the creek?
Yes. So that was part of the reason why we had the placement of the new lift station is right at the bridge there at Water Leaf and the creek. And we, we put it deep enough and sized it with the hope that we would be developing this parcel someday. So we'll have to get across the creek with both water and sewer at that point, and, and then the water line will loop back out and tie back in on 101st also. So we'll have a nice two-point water loop there. Yeah, and the sewer will be deep enough and, and large enough to handle the whole development.
Okay. There's no water connection into the Bramblewood subdivision?
No. Uh, no, unfortunately, there's a, that's a pretty big gap there. There's a pretty wide floodplain on both sides of the creek through there, and I, I don't think they have any easements in any of that area. We talked a little bit about that last time when somebody asked about possibly trying to get a, a path or a trail connecting into Bramblewood, and I just don't think it's feasible. But we're going to look to try to expand our bike path system in the Preserve, and, and as we get into the engineering of this phase, we'll, we'll come back with some more detailed drawings on that, but we'd like to have some additional paths and bike paths and things like that. We did also talk at the last Plan Commission meeting about looking at, rather than putting the sidewalk on the north side of 101st, where there's no connection east and west, potentially using that money and completing the bike, the sidewalk on the south side of 101st instead, which makes sense to us. So again, those are things that we'll start to flush out during the engineering phase and the design phase, but right now, we're just trying to get, get the zoning so that we can move forward with the engineering.
And Jack, if this was discussed at the last meeting, I apologize I wasn't there. I know this is only zoning, and I'm probably talking more about plating, but sometimes we're...
Mm-hmm.
The exit, entrance point off 101st, I know it's not lined up to Bullview Road. Is there, so you have, we don't have offsetting intersections?
Yeah.
I don't know.
And there'll prob, uh, we've looked at that, that was brought up at the last meeting because there's kind of a minimum offset distance. There's actually a house in the corner that we don't own, so the drawing's not perfectly accurate, but we can't perfectly line up with the road across the street. More than likely, we'll end up moving our, our entrance east, maybe a lot or two, so that there's more separation. I think the minimum's 150 or 250.
125, yeah.
Yeah. So if we can't line up directly, we'll at least make sure that they're far enough apart so that it's not difficult there, but we'll make sure we got the proper turn lane, since that road was just recently widened and repaved. We'll make sure we get the D cell lane, we'll get the left turn lane going in, and so we'll have room to do that there.
And then your connectivity to the, I'm doing this right, to the east...
Yes.
...of Bull Run, that's the Preserves, correct?
Yes, yes.
Will there be connectivity that will take the Preserve subdivision all the way up north to 93rd?
Yes. So ultimately, when this is all done, we, we currently have an entrance on White Oak, as you know. We're heading towards the entrance on 93rd at Monex, which we just put in the, the curb returns when you guys paved the road. And so we'll have one entrance on 93rd, one on White Oak, and one on 101st, which is kind of nice.
Because I know you're not crossing north on this phase of the Preserve of Bull Run, as long as there's some sort of, I know you're accessing it to the east, but I just want to, connectivity is important.
Yeah, that's it. The, the rest of it's all surrounded by creeks, so the crossing is going to be difficult. It's expensive to get across there. We've got to go through Lake County Drainage Board, get all the permits and Army Corps and DNR, and there's a lot involved in it, but it, it'll really bring the subdivision together nicely.
Okay.
Is the green space, Jack, is that floodplain or floodway?
Some of it is. A good part of it is, yeah.
Is that considered calculated in the density for the, to meet the R1?
Uh, yeah. I mean, ultimately, that, that gives us our open space, yeah.
How many lots are 80-foot and how many 90-foot, and did you count those?
I don't have that yet. In the past, we've done probably 20% as 100-footers, 20% as 90-footers, and 60% as 80-footers. I mean, that's about what we're running now in, in the Preserve.
That royal blue area is the A-zone, the, the special flood hazard area that we were talking about?
Yep.
Sorry, the computer's running real slow.
Yeah, and we found that it's best to just stay away from it. We're not going to try to mitigate it or move it or fill it. We just stay, stay out of it.
So there's some, but not a lot. That's the, what is that, Rick, the blue?
The blue is the, is the 100-year floodplain.
Floodplain, okay.
And then the crosshatch is the, is the wetland area.
Okay.
And there certainly may be more wetland than that. That's just from the County GIS.
Yeah, if you zoom down, zoom down into the very southwest corner, Rick, and you'll see that house I was talking about that's across from the entrance. It, it didn't make it onto our plans, but it's there and...
Right here.
It, yeah, it kind of, it actually shows it as a whole in the town, that it's not part of the town. That may be the case, but it, it, it hinders us from lining up exactly with the entrance they've got. So we're going to, we'll separate them by enough that it, it won't be a problem.
Right, and Jack's right, that isn't in town, that, that house.
Now, what's the, that, what's the right-of-way there, Rick, on that private lot? Is it the far north one?
Here?
Yes.
Yeah. That's what it looks like there, yeah.
So even with that additional right-of-way, not able to get the road to line up?
Not, not by the time...
Because I thought it was a site distance.
Yeah, not by the time we get the XL and D cell lanes and try to get it widened to where we can get a left turn lane in there and everything. I, I think we'd probably prefer to just set the entrance off rather than stick it right up against that house.
Rick, do you know the zoning northwest of this property?
Well, that's Bramblewood, which is R2.
R2.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions from the board? Comments, concerns?
Just a comment. I, I like to see, you know, more 90 to 100-foot lots than the 80-foot lots. By the time you put the house on.
Yeah.
It's, it seems like it's pretty tight.
Okay. Yeah, and we'll, we'll continue to work on that. And like I said, I, this is the second time I brought it in for a study session. We didn't really change it, but I just wanna get it in front of you guys as many times as possible. Right now, we're working on the zoning, and then we'll just keep coming back as we, as we start to flush through the engineering.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Next on the agenda.
Paul has something.
If you don't mind, may I comment? Try to be helpful here. I just wanna get clarification. I think you answered this question. I heard it briefly. That intersection at 101st will probably be the busiest intersection that preserves has. 'Cause everybody coming and going to Illinois is gonna shoot right to that intersection. So, you said there will be a, a left turn?
Yeah.
Lane for eastbound traffic?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be really important, 'cause I can see everybody coming and going from that entrance and cutting through. Additionally, our new, you might have applied before our new subdivision control ordinance went into effect. However, the, and the new ordinance, we're seeking to put wider sidewalks on our major arteries in hopes that as, well, look at White Oak, it's, the bike path is along the artery. So, I'd like to see that path on the south side be eight-foot width between those two streets. And I know it's not gonna go really far, but in, in the future, it could be expanded east. If the town can get a bridge over Bull Run Creek, it could be a direct connection. And we could not have bike riders trying to navigate 101st anymore.
In this area, Paul, are you, are you talking about between these two roads right here?
Yep. It's about the same run of length that they'd have to put in on the north side. But it would provide a logical link. It would link down, it would link those two streets, link that bike path. Link to the sidewalk heading east, which we would look in the future at getting a bridge or something across Bull Run Creek and direct connecting it at 101st and White Oak if that's, if that's feasible. But it would certainly add that, a nice link there.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Beyond that, I just, I, and I'm, I'm not a commission member here, but the 80-foot lots, there's a pretty high percentage. I was, I was surprised on that. So, I, was that the exact percentage in the original preserves as well?
No, I, I didn't have that number. I'm just guessing off the top of my head, but we're.
We'll do some homework. And, and the original preserves is beautiful, but some of those houses seem like they're a little, little tight. So, I do like the open space and such, so that, that's, that's a nice touch. But when they start getting too close on the sides, I start to worry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. There's no further comments regarding this. We'll go to point E. Greystone Unit 3, discuss rezoning of roughly 40 acres immediate south of Unit 2. It was west of Calumet and north of 109th. Jack, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. So, this is the 40-acre parcel on the west side of Calumet and just south of Greystone Unit 2 and north of the high school. The Protestant High School on the west side of Calumet, formerly known as the Sigma Farm. And we'd like to continue with the same product that we have on the west side of Calumet of Greystone, which is a combination of duplexes and cottage homes. This will continue the sidewalk down along Calumet. We'll basically get it all the way to the school property. We'll connect all the dead-end roads that are in Greystone now. We'll continue the bike path along the pipeline to our west property line. And we will be stubbing a road west towards Illinois to a future parcel that could ultimately give us a, a connection over to State Line. This will also complete, we're gonna add to and complete the park that was planned as part of Greystone Unit 2, so we're adding to that. So, yeah, it's a, it's a nice compliment and kinda the finishing touch to Greystone.
So, Jack, this is our, this would be R3 PUD?
This would be R3 PUD, which is what we have the other sections owned. It, it allows for the cottage lots and the duplex lots.
Any variants to the resident sizes on this PUD or is it just lot sizes?
Just lot size and the front setback would be 25, which again, is what we've been doing out there. He's gonna try to pull it up here, I think.
Yeah.
It's probably a pretty big drawing.
It is. I'd have to get rid of, here we go, it's starting to, it's starting to load.
One of the reasons I brought this one back this week, and I, again, I just want you to see them as many times as you can. We have made a slight change to the layout of this one. The, the general road configuration is similar, but now we just have the duplexes or the paired villas around the perimeter. And then we have the cottage homes kind of in the center as their own little pod. So, we have, we have essentially, we have two builders out there. One, McFarlane Homes builds the duplexes and Shilling Construction builds the cottage homes. So, we're, we're keeping them separated and try to come up with kind of a nice layout, some curved roads. Again, high architectural standards, high landscape standards. And, yeah, so that's, oh, and also, we're going to propose an additional professional office lot right up in the corner 'cause it's, it's right at the traffic light there. We do have one professional office lot already in the last phase, so this would be directly adjacent to that.
But no access off of Calumet, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And Jack, how, how far west does the high school go to your southern property? How far west does it go? Does it go all the way to the end of this drawing?
Not quite.
If we can tell from, here's the high, here's the school here. It go, it looks like it goes here unless they continue to own back here, Jack.
Yeah, you're, it's, it's, it's that.
Let's see.
Doesn't work right either, but it's that line, yeah, there you go.
Let's see who owns.
About two-thirds of the way down.
Yeah, yeah, it's, there it is. That's it. This being the Sigma Farm here. So, your road that you stub, you stub to about right here, right?
I put it right in the center of that, I believe that's Lambert owns that parcel to the west.
I think it's Krilich.
Oh, Krilich, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right, Krilich. So, I put it right in the center of that strip that he's got there, so potentially, he could extend that road and have lots on both sides.
And this goes all the way over to State Line Road?
Correct.
And that's in town?
That is in town.
Just, just as I look at this as future planning, it would be nice to have access to the property just west of the high school for some future, I don't know if there's additional stuff to the south and maybe move your other one up north, just so that there's connectivity to both properties, one to the south and one to the due west.
All of those properties to the south, if you wanna stay up on that GIS for a minute, Rick, all those properties to the south are long, thin strips that front on 109th, right there at the bottom of the screen. So, they actually have access coming from the south, but they're all private residences that sit on five or 10 acres. So, there's not a large enough parcel south that is really developable there. If, if there was, I'd gladly stub a road there, 'cause most of the time, we end up using it ourselves, so. Possibly that large, the large parcel north of Krilich has some potential, but that would be developed with the Krilich piece, I would think.
Jack, I'm just on my soapbox about connectivity.
Yeah, sure.
Just make sure we're not missing an opportunity in the future if future land development happens. So, then R3 PUD zoning, you know, variances, of course, lot sizes, no other variances that, or?
Front yard setback, yeah.
Front yard setback.
Other than that, we keep the, we keep the standard eight-foot side yard. So, yeah.
And the square footage of the units and stuff like, okay. Questions, comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I am concerned with the amount of paired villas. I'm not a fan of paired villas, and I would like to see far less of them throughout town, especially moving forward. I believe we have enough. So, if there's any way to lower the number of those or eliminate them completely, I would be in favor of that.
I would agree. And Rick, do we have the Saint, I know we were, Saint John was kinda keeping a track of duplexes in town. Do you know the count?
I don't know the exact count up to date, Bob. I know that it has been, it has been, they've been a lesser component of the building, building permits that we've been issuing since 2016. So, each year, 17, 18, 19, there have been fewer, what I'll call multi-family, other than single-family building permits making up our total building permits. So, it's been on a decline. But I, I don't know the exact percentage or number off the top of my head, no.
And what's a number, Paul, of, that the council would like to see, you know, percentage?
I don't recall the number off the top of my head, but I know we've exceeded that number if you count doorbells and not rooftops. So, it, it reached a pretty high level around 2016 or so, where Rick's going back to, so.
Yeah, that's right. And then since 2016, there's been a higher percentage of single-family permits issued as compared to the mix that was occurring before, in the, in a few years, the few years before that. So, it has been on a decline for multi-family permits over the last few years. I've actually got those if, you wanna go ahead with the discussion and I'll, I'll.
Yeah, I can tell you, we're seeing the demand for them. It, it's really the maintenance-free concept that both of these products have, you know, snow removal, lawn mowing, everything's included. And honestly, quite a few of them are being bought by Saint John residents that are ready to move away from the big yard and mowing and maintenance and all that, so.
Yeah, the demand is probably the baby boomers retiring, but then what happens after, you know, 20 years from now, 40 years from now?
Yeah.
Where, you know, we lost a lot of them, and now where are we at?
Yeah, so the, again, we, we stress in our developments, the high architectural standards on the buildings. We work with the builders, high landscape standards. I can tell you that on the paired villas or duplexes that are being built in Greystone right now, per side, the values are ranging anywhere from 250 to 350 per side. So, you're talking about a building that's, has a value of between 500 and 700,000 for that building. So, in terms of an assessed value, it, it's actually higher than what we would have if we had, these, these are sitting on 90-foot lots. So, if we were putting a single-family house on there, we wouldn't have nearly that value.
And I guess, you know, to maintain the elderly, to keep them there, you know, maybe something needs to attract them, them also to track, to keep those folks there. You know, maybe a community center, you know, something like that to keep them there and to keep them coming in.
Yep. The walking paths are, have been great. I mean, they're, they're being used a lot. This development, you know, we, we put a lot of money into the entrance, into the stoplight at the intersection. It's, it's one of the best functioning intersections in town in terms of getting in and out of the development. Turn lanes, everything works really smoothly. So, we're just trying to finish up what we've done on the west side there, and everybody seems to like it.
It's all ahead.
This, just the, the numbers here. In 2017, we did 291 single-family, 64 multi. In 18, it was 285 and 38. And in 19, it was 282 and 54. And then we have year-to-date, and I'll get you just a second for 2020. And you can see the numbers here, 165 single-family, 30 duplex. Now, and that, by the way, that includes, there's, there's 15 duplex buildings, 30 duplex units, just so you know that those are units there.
Okay.
So, that's, that's been the trend the last few years.
And we see this one as, as with the previous phases, this is about a three-year build-out on this piece right here, three to four years, which is about what we've been running on the previous phases. We, we would come back with it in segments. We would plat it out and build it out in segments, probably third, third, third.
How's your single-family across the street?
The single-family across the street has been slow. It's been a struggle there. You know, we, we compete a little bit against the preserve, which has a little more contour, some rolling land, some trees. This area of town, for some reason, we're, we're on the fringe, it's flat, there's no trees. And the single-family's struggled over there. We're, we're starting to get a little bit of traction, but we developed the first phase of single-family four years ago with 24 lots, and I still have six left. So, I mean, that's, it's not, it's not great. We're, we're actually getting ready to, one of the items that we're gonna get to is a final plat for another section of single-family. So, it's getting better, but it, it's just extremely slow over there. The area just lends itself a little bit better to a higher density. We've got some commercial around the corner. And just the flat open space out there, it's, it's, you know, on the fringe of town. Yep.
Jack, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go back to being a dead horse. So, Greystone Unit 2, there is no east-west connectivity, correct?
Correct, other than the, the new one that we're proposing going out to the west.
This on Unit 3, or proposed on this plan right here?
Yes, on this plan, going out. We have one road stubbed north towards the bank in, in the previous phase. Yeah, there, Rick's got it up there now. So, there is one road that stubs north, and then this one will stub west. But we were, we were kind of butted up against Emerald Crossing, so there was nowhere to go there.
Mm-hmm, I remember that.
Yeah, we tried to get a road, I think, through there, too.
Yep.
And your comment is potentially, and I know it's a crystal ball, trying to get some sort of access point in this development all the way out to State Line, potentially.
Yeah.
Crystal ball.
Yeah.
Okay. Again, I'm.
That's the best spot for it. If it's ever gonna happen, it'll happen there.
Right, to get all the way over here.
Okay. I'm very central, you know. I'm just thinking if it'd be, I understand the access, maybe the property to the north of the pink. Then one is, you don't have access to, I'm just.
Yeah, we could.
I'm just trying to figure out if there, the more access points are, the better traffic flow is. That's always been a big issue with the plan commission, and that's, I guess, my new soapbox. So, I'm just trying to figure out the best way of connectivity, both east and west and north and south. Just as we look, as we grow, and as we move farther south and farther west, it's making sure we plan for it. So, we don't have the issues like we did at Emerald Crossing where you can't access?
Yeah.
That in the future, so.
There's a traffic light at Sheffield and 100, is that 101st?
Yeah.
Is that working pretty good?
That one is. When at Calumet and 101st is okay. I mean, that could actually use a turn lane.
Yeah.
But, but really, this whole corridor functions way better than it did five years ago when we started Greystone. In the meantime, we put in the, the light at Greystone Drive. I think the county did the one down at 109th, and you guys did the one at 101st. Calumet Avenue flows very nicely.
And we actually participated as a partner in the one at 109th and Calumet. A third of that cost was ours, third was county, and a third was the Eliana High School. And I think we even contributed something to the Sheffield and 101st light. But yeah, I agree with Jack, that whole corridor works so much better than it, than it was.
Yeah, and I think the lights are timed, too. Yeah, and I think the lights are timed, too.
Yep.
They're working in sequence or in same time.
Yep.
Before we move on, any other questions or comments, concerns?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Absolutely, sir.
Mr. Slager, what is the, I recall reading it was 90-foot width on the duplex lots and what, 60 on the cottage?
That's correct, yes.
Is that consistent with the property to the north?
Yes.
The exact same?
It's actually, I believe some of the cottage homes to the north were 56 and 58. So we've gone to a little bit wider, just, just a little more cushion in there. So we've gone to a full 60 on that cottage lots.
Just seems awful tight. Have, I'm just throwing a curveball out there. I like that you've added another commercial lot. If you think there could be success in that, have you ever considered bringing, I think you're talking professional office, like low-level office, which is, I think, a nice product, and people could actually live and walk across the street to work. Have you ever thought about extending that even more?
We did. We looked at it. We've, you know, we've got a piece across the street, too, that's own professional office, the triangle over there, the five acres. We've had some calls. You know, we've had the signs up for a while. I have an interested party in the corner here, which is why I'm adding another lot to the south. And that would be like a, like a 24-hour fitness or health club, basically, is looking at the corner, which we love that use there. The bike path comes there. It's not real disruptive to the neighborhood. It almost acts like a clubhouse or whatever, so. We have that interest so far. Obviously, no set users for any of these, but we think we could complement that with possibly another use there, and maybe we could bring it a little further south, sure.
And, and I'm just, again, just throwing it out there to build the community. Like what Mr. Burleson was saying, is even a coffee shop allowing uses like that, Dunkin' Donuts, something that these folks that are retired, whatever, could walks and have a cup of coffee, go to the health club. That would be welcome additions in town. I can tell you that I'd welcome that over more duplexes. So if there would be a way to, if you feel that there's a use for that along Calumet, it's just a. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll look at that some more. We were, we're trying to not have it be into the neighborhood where it's across the street from a residential, so that's why we kind of stopped it where we did. It's across from the park. We've also had some calls from, for the other piece across the street. We've had calls from like a daycare. We've had calls from a nail salon or a hair place. And those sort of uses would be great in any of these places, so.
As long as they don't look like a strip mall, you know, the parking would be along the interior road and, and, yeah, so that's, and it wouldn't infringe on the, on the single-family homes, for sure. Anyway, just some ideas there, so.
Sure. Appreciate that.
All right.
Just out of curiosity, what are your plans with that five-acre triangle in terms of plating?
I think we'll wait till we get at least one user. We, it's been engineered and laid out for four individual buildings, multi-tenant buildings. And we have the engineering for that. Like I said, we've gotten some calls from single-tenant users, so we have to get to the point where we can package a number of them in and put, at least put a building up. So I think in the meantime, we'll just hold off, but it'll, at some point, it'll come in as a one-lot commercial development.
That's what I wondered, yeah.
It's part of the PUD from the start, and, and you guys at that time actually saw the plans for, for the site, but until we get a user, we're not going to finalize it.
That's five acres where the commercial lot?
Yeah. And it holds four, it's designed for four buildings, four multi-use buildings. Not, not a strip mall, but a professional office type.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We will move on. Last call. All right, item F, the preserves east, former Casboni property, 9500 block Oak Avenue, rezoning this property from open space to R1, single-family resident.
Yes, so again, I had this here last month, and I wanted to bring it back again. We've advertised and invited the neighbors to come to the next meeting, so I imagine we'll see a few show up.
I've had a couple of calls today.
So they're starting to get their notices already. This is the nearly 40-acre, 35-acre Casboni parcel. This lies directly north of Rosewood. And it's a nice piece of land. It's got some woods and some water in it. We're going to go straight R1 zoning on this one. Again, we're, we're coming from an OS, open-space zoning, to straight R1, no variance is needed, full 20,000-square-foot lots. There's a couple two-acre or one-acre-plus lots actually fronting into Rosewood. Lots 14 and 15 on the plan. And I've got some copies of the plan if anybody wants a paper copy.
Oh, I'll take one, Jack.
You have hard.
Oh, I do, right here. Sorry.
You got one?
Yeah, I got one.
Yeah, that one hasn't changed. So we're going to try to, you know, conserve some of the wetlands and woods in there. There's some water. We'd like to put a little trail to connect the two areas. There's not enough, there's not enough good ground to actually connect the east and the west side, so it's, becomes two separate little developments, but the extension of 96th Avenue into a set of cul-de-sacs, and then one long cul-de-sac coming off of White Oak. I suppose we may need a variance for the length of that cul-de-sac coming off of White Oak, but this was, this was one that was talked about before, where he was originally going to look at four lots with driveways going out to White Oak. And I think somebody, when I listened to that meeting, somebody even said, I'd rather get a long cul-de-sac than having four driveways out onto, onto White Oak. So we heard that, we listened, and that's what we came up with.
You'd need a waiver at the time of primary plat.
Okay.
All right, questions from the board?
So that bike path, that Lot 14, that tie into Alvino, Rose Court?
Yep. That's kind of our concept. They've got a sidewalk there, so we'd like to see that.
Tie in.
Kind of bring Rosewood into the whole picture, and ultimately, you'll have sidewalks on all of these lots. Our thought process is we'd like to put a crosswalk at the entrance across White Oak, similar to what we did at Continental, where you could get to our bike path that runs along White Oak from, from all of these developments. There's your connectivity.
Jack, couple of questions. The preserves to the west, is there going to be any access point proposed? You guys thought of coming out onto White Oak at that northern area of the preserves? And if so, would it align potentially with this development across the street? So we have.
We thought about it. We looked at it, and, and we really didn't want to cut another entrance out to White Oak. It, you know, there's, there's a lot of houses to the north here, and really, the entrance that's there functions pretty well, so our, going back to our original master plan of the preserve, we wanted one nice entrance on 93rd, one nice entrance on White Oak, and one nice entrance on 101st. So we really didn't want to put another entrance out to White Oak. The, the bike path is also all along there on the west side of White Oak, or will be. And we'd like to at least tie the bike path into this development, but not have a, not have an entrance there.
And if things change in the future, and you do seek an additional access point on White Oak, I hope you would consider at this juncture point.
Okay.
I appreciate the no access off the driveways. That was a.
I think that was a big one. That was a big one.
That was a line in the sand for me, so I appreciate that. It's just another contact point for traffic. Again, I'm going to bring up the issue of connectivity. I do see the issue with wetland. When you say it's bad soil, is it DNR, IDAM? Is it where they're saying you can't? Is it a cost factor that you can't? Because right now, if I, if I know my streets, the only way to get to Alcott from White Oak is either 93rd or 100 and.
Second.
Second. Again, we're going to have limited opportunities for connectivity. I just don't want to pass up an opportunity if it's the bad soil, so it's a cost factor, versus if you say, you know, John, DNR, IDAM is telling me we cannot put a road through there.
It's all of the above. It's, it's all of the above, yeah. It's not, it wouldn't, if it was a cost factor, that would not be at the top of my list. I mean, we would, we would probably still do it, but it's, it's not even possible.
Okay.
It's not.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Because, again, 93rd to 102nd, we have no east-west way to get through, and so.
You can, yeah, he pulled up the flood plain and the wetlands, and it's probably even a little more substantial than what that's showing, but it's, it's pretty much north and south. All of the water that comes from the north, all the way from the other side of 93rd, comes right down that rear lot line and comes through the middle of this property getting to Bull Run Ditch. So there's a, there's a pretty substantial water flow.
And I know those neighbors would not be very happy with my suggestion. I, I get that. But in the long run, we just need better connectivity, just emergency purposes, public works purposes, just transportation, traffic flow purposes. It'd just be nice. So I see the blue. I just wanted to make sure. I reiterated it. If it's, if it was a cost factor, I would, you know, see if you guys would consider that. But if you're telling me IDAM, DNR, Lake County Drainage is saying there's no way you can put a road in there, that's.
Shows, looks like a gap, but you know, this is kind of deceiving where hidden is. Looks like that's not wide enough to get a.
It's, it's wide enough that we're going to sneak a bike path through there.
But not a road?
Yeah, it's about, it's about 10 feet wide.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah. Yeah, they've, they've got a path through there now with a culvert. That's the reason it's, it's disconnected there, but they, they have a path cut through there with a pipe.
But the wetlands is.
It's there.
It's a lot wider.
Yep.
Okay.
And is it open space to R1, single-family? Okay.
Correct.
Questions? I think I made all my. Who's, is that Casboni's house right there?
The southwest corner is Casboni, and the middle of the property is, her name escapes me right now, but yeah, you can click on that.
Is there?
Golick.
Golick. Sue Golick.
Okay. Questions? Anyone else before we move on? Going once, going twice?
Mr. Kendy?
All right.
I have a question about the bike path. I was, I was trying to let the board and commission speak first, since I'm not a voting member. You mentioned the crosswalk across White Oak. Is the plan to, so the bike path would connect to that cul-de-sac, and then you'd be able to bike up to White Oak there? Or are you talking, go through Rosewood and a crosswalk down there?
No, right at my entrance, they actually, it shows on there as kind of a solid black line across White Oak. So we take one of the two sidewalks, probably the south one, take it across, maybe do the flashing signal like we did at Continental, stripe it, and get it right to the bike path right there.
That flashing signal's a good idea, and, yeah, so you'd be able to come off that bike path down this residential street, connect here, and get to the east side of town, technically, through the subdivisions.
And through Rose, Rosewood would be able to do it, too, so.
Right, right, okay. And I'm only stating this for public record. I had a resident call me this week with concerns. Rumor on the street was that this was connecting to Hilltop, and it, and I told her it's not connecting to Hilltop, and I'm verifying it here.
Yeah, it could.
At a public meeting.
The right-of-way is there.
But it, but it's not. The plan is not to connect to Hilltop. When this is platted, it will not connect to Hilltop, and Hilltop will be.
Cut off.
Cut off, and those folks have been there a long time, and.
Where's Hilltop in the north?
Hilltop's right here at the north end, by, between lots four and five. It's a cul-de-sac right here.
Okay.
And there's really no advent, advantage connectivity-wise, John, to connecting to Hilltop? I'm just making that statement.
No, I mean, you have White Oak that takes you north and south. I'm trying to get east and west here.
Right, and, and Hilltop is not adequately designed to handle that in-and-out traffic either, so.
I don't even think it's curb and gutter.
No, it is not.
So it's, Hilltop comes out to 93rd just a couple, 200, 300 feet from White Oak anyway. So I agree, there's, there's no, there's no benefit to be gained by tying in here.
Let's go farm it for about 10 years, then it'll dry up. I'm sorry. I shouldn't say that out loud. All right. Unit four, secondary plat approval on this project for September 2nd.
So the Preserve Phase Four is being developed right now. There's the 16, two lots, 16, two single-family lots. Includes a small detention area. It actually ties together one road from Unit One, one road from Unit Two, and one road from Unit Three. So it, it kind of brings all of the previous phases into cohesive bundle. Fits up in the northwest corner of what we've already developed, and gets us right up to where the old farmhouse was, which kind of sits in that little notch in the top of the picture there. They're starting to take down some of the buildings there, some of the old barns. We've got American Natural Resources out of Griffith is removing the barns and preserving some of the barn wood. And so this gets us up into the area that ultimately will be the park. So we're excited to potentially start to improve the park next year. We've been getting a lot of call from residents and Preserve wanting, wanting the park, so we're there now. But yeah, and up to the creek, and so this will be Unit Four. And then the next phase, we haven't decided yet, but we'll start to head towards either the 93rd entrance or the 101st entrance and, and start to get to the point where we have another access point in the Preserve.
Ken, any comments?
Yeah, Jack, where are you on installation of infrastructure on this? I know you just got started on it, but how far along are you?
They're, they're actually finishing up the sewer and water this week, and we'll be starting on the streets next week. So the retention pond is in and done and seeded, and the grass is growing. So they've been working, they've actually been working out there for about two months.
Do you plan on getting the surface asphalt down this year?
Uh, we do not. We'll probably bond for the surface. We'll typically, we'll do like the surface asphalt for the previous phase towards the end of this year. So we'll be, we'll be putting the surface on in Phase Three this fall, and then we'll look to probably do the surface here next fall.
Okay.
You good, Ken?
Yeah, when we get closer to the September study session, I will contact Public Works and find out where we are on all of the testing of the sewer and the water and proof rollings for the roads, and see where we are and what's left to do.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good. And I did get, I do believe I gave you the costs already on this.
Yes, you did. Yes, I've got them.
Okay, so you have that. So yeah, if you, if you let me know before that meeting what the fees are, we'll get those paid.
Yeah, we'll talk before that meeting.
Okay. There's, there's going to be some really nice lots in this phase. Everything along the creek is just fantastic. A bunch of 100-foot lots there, and some 90s in the middle and some 80s, so really, really going to be a nice phase.
Awesome. Any comments, questions for the, from the board? Rick, Paul? Adam, I don't want to leave you out. You have any comments? All right, very good. All right, next on the agenda, H. Jack, you're going to be here a long time September 2nd, aren't you?
Yeah, sorry about that.
All right, seeking again another secondary plat for Greystone Unit One, Block Five.
Right. So this is the next section of single-family. I know, Bob, you were asking about single-family earlier. This will be the third phase of single-family that we did out there. We did a 24-lot phase, and then we did a 14-lot phase. And we started to put in another 15-lot phase, and then, you know, we said, well, it's getting kind of crazy that we do these small phases. Let's just do a bigger one. So this will actually tie in two dead-end streets and make a nice loop out there. We're getting a little more traction on the single-family. It's just a lot slower than any of the other products and slower than what we're doing in the Preserve. So this still is about a two-to-three-year supply of lots for the single-family. We will have one more phase of single-family after this, and we are redesigning that last phase now, so that will actually get us some connectivity either south or east. so, uh, that will actually get us some connectivity either south or east, depending on how the design finishes out for that off of the southeast corner here.
And, Mr. President, in my review of this, this is in substantial compliance with the primary plat. One, I think one very insignificant difference in the lot size of Lot 69, Jack, by about 140 square feet, um, was the only difference that I saw in it. On the secondary plat, it's about 140 square feet, uh, smaller than it was in the primary plat, but it's still a large lot.
Okay. Is that corner lot?
Yeah. And I don't know why that would be, but it's possible.
A couple of measurements were just different.
Yeah.
Um, but, but again, very, very slightly, so, as you can see, it's 14,232 square feet here. It was 14,366 in the, on the primary plat, and there was a length and a, and a width that was slightly different, Jack. That was all. Everything else was the same.
Um, Ken, also on this one, the, um, the sewers and water are done out there. Um, the Walsh and Kelly started putting stone in today. Uh, I think they've got curbs going in Friday or Saturday this week, so, um, we should be, by, by the September 2nd meeting, we should be complete, aside from surface coat of asphalt.
Okay, uh, we have no pipelines that we cannot use a vibratory compactor across?
Correct. There's no, no, we're not crossing any pipelines or anything with this phase.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's good.
And, and the retention pond was fully complete in a previous phase, so there's no pond.
Right.
In this phase. It's just, just basic streets and lots.
Anyone? Questions, comments? If not, I'll let Jack sit down.
All right. Thank you.
Jack needs a chair.
I'll be back on September 2nd.
See you September 2nd, sir. Rick, uh, do you wanna move defer item I?
Yeah, since we're, we're low... We don't have two of our members here.
Okay.
Um, I think that's probably the prudent thing to do. I did hand out, uh, a copy of, of document called zoning ordinance review. I also sent it out, um, via email just, just this evening, so that the other members who are, so you'd all have it electronically, and so that the other members that are here virtually would have this as well. And I did, I did preface that by saying that this is a dated document. I've had this for quite a while, uh, have been updating it over time, but it's, it's just a starting off point for our discussion on the zoning ordinance review. There's, uh, I, I said to Adam that there's a number of things that I know I wanna add to, to this list, but it just gives you, if you wanna look through it, it gives you an idea of, of things that we're gonna look at. There are, I believe it's 19 or 20 chapters to the zoning ordinance altogether, and, uh, 20, looks like 21. Um, several of them, um, either have very minor changes or none at all. For example, of course, chapter one, introduction, and chapter two, I had no changes, and, and, uh, a couple others that were, uh, no changes to 20 or 21, so... But this is gonna take some time to do and to do right, so, um, that's a document you can start looking at, just to give us an idea of what we're facing over the next couple few, few months.
So, the, we won't address this at the September regular schedule?
No.
We'll do it the study session?
These'll be study session only for a while.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then it was, would be a motion before this board to approve and recommend these changes, and that would go to the Town Council for their final approval?
Just like the subdivision control ordinance.
Very good. All right, board members, we got homework, so if everyone takes the time to review, and then maybe get back to Rick, or we could go over at the study session for September, uh, recommended changes Rick has.
Yeah, I, I've done this a couple of times. When I was, in, in the 24 years that I was a dyer, we revised our zoning ordinance a couple of times, and it's, it was difficult enough to go through the process when we were able to meet face-to-face. Try to do it through this virtual, uh, atmosphere that we're in now. I'm, I'm hopeful that we can all get back together and at least be here all together when we're doing this. It just, I think it's gonna be difficult to undertake this in a, in a virtual, uh, format, but, uh, if we have to, we will.
Is there anything on here that would be pressing to get done, and piecemeal's not the proper term, to separate from the total list, so it's not, we have to do the total list, or is there something that's...
I'd rather do it comprehensively.
Comprehensively, okay, very good.
There's things we could tackle independently, but, but there's to do a comprehensive.
Very good. With that, I'll open up the board. Any comments, questions? If not, you out.
Mr. Kennedy, um, or Mr. President, the zoning ordinance, yeah, hopefully we can really bite into that a month from now, the next study session. Um, I do encourage all members to read Mr. Everly's notes. If, if you don't understand them, feel free to pick up the phone and call Rick. Um, call me. I'd be happy to try to answer them, too, but Rick's really an expert at this. Um, and it, it may seem, seem overwhelming, but it's, it's not too tough. Our, our zoning ordinance, um, it's a pretty good document. It just needs tweaking and, and revising, and, uh, and Rick's done a lot of the heavy lifting on that, so we ought to be able to move through that actually fairly easy. I, I think a lot of the terms in the zoning ordinance are more tangible to Plan Commission members and make more sense than the subdivision control ordinance, which is highly technical.
Right.
Uh, you know, you know, that type of thing. Um, and, um, I would also just, uh, offer my seat, uh, for the next meeting. Our next meeting's a public meeting. There's gonna be multiple public hearings. I would, I would encourage any Plan Commissioners that feel comfortable attending in person to do so, and I'd be happy to relinquish my seat and sit out in the audience to enable that. Um, I would expect, uh, potentially, a, a high turnout of, of public comment, so, uh, be prepared.
If we're still doing this remotely, if the governor extends his order, will, we can't take, can we accept comment virtually now? No, yes, we can.
Yes.
Who would administer that? Would that be Jason? Would he administer? Cause I've seen it done where it is only the board member speak, and then someone raises her hand and the administrator of the Zoom meeting.
They do it at the council level, so Paul might be more familiar than I am.
So, at, at the council level, uh, Beth Hernandez and, and her office is happy to receive public comments through her email, and...
During the meeting?
Uh, I'm sorry, no, ahead of the meeting, anytime ahead of the meeting, up to, like, you know, they're open. I guess they're open hours, and then that is all, uh, sent over, uh, to the council or to this commission, for instance, and then they could be read in at the time of public comment. Those letters could be read in. Um, but I, I would expect a, a fair turnout as well in, in-person comments, so.
Okay.
I, with all the agenda items we have, so, I could be wrong, but might be a lot to work through at that meeting.
Okay. Questions, comments? All right. We will adjourn to September 2nd. Everyone have a great couple of weeks.